I'd like to call the meeting to order and invite you to stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board member Ryder is on her way. She's in traffic on jury duty, so we'll excuse her for a few minutes until she gets here, but we'll go ahead and get started. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held October 8th, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. That motion carries. No one wishing to address the board this evening? Then may I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. That motion carries, and we are on to the good news report.
All right. Thank you. My name's Boyd Perkins. I'm coordinator of fine arts here in the Sioux Falls schools. I do K-12 music, art, and theater, and speech and debate. And thank you for having me. I am, it's the end of our marching band season, or close to it. They have their indoor performances coming up, but I thought what a great opportunity to highlight some of the events that we've had going on with our outstanding marching bands. Our marching bands are the finest in the state of South Dakota and really lead the way in the upper Midwest. They're just really have a lot of respect and just a lot of tremendous following all the way through. Oh, I do have a loud voice. I'm a former band director myself. I thought you were waving to her, that's why.
Oh, sorry.
But like I was saying, our marching bands are highly respected in the Midwest. They are now respected on a national level. This weekend, they were in Indianapolis at the Bands of America Super Regional, competing with 71 bands from, of the finest bands from across the country. And we're going to get a chance to meet the leaders of the band here, student leaders, our drum majors. We have one director here with us as well. And I'm going to show you some of the results of their competitions that we have. First of all, a local videographer made this pump-up video. Oftentimes, you see these for football teams, so they made one for the Lincoln Band last week. I'm going to play that for you right now. I have to close this down. There we go. A lot of people aren't aware of the intensity level that goes into a modern marching band performance. This actually captures it pretty well, and it gets some of the instruction that you'll get a chance to see in some of the behind the scenes. It's only about a minute and a half. You guys are ready, all right? You guys are so ready. We are peaking now, all right? It's time to peak. You are so, so solid right now. Right within what we have rehearsed. Do exactly everything that we told you to do, and you're going to be just fine. Don't do above and beyond. Don't do anything less, all right? Right down the middle, right through the upright. That's what we need today. Guys, I know you're going to bring the energy. I don't doubt that at all. Hey, I know you're going to bring the passion. Bring the control with you. Take a look at the stadium. That's about to be our stadium. And I totally am anxious to see what this band does in a controlled environment. You guys are going to nail it. It's going to be so much fun. Now, it's kind of fun. I'm going to show you some, some of the results of some of our competitions that we had this fall with all three of the high school marching bands. That just happened to be the Lincoln Band, but we really have three very fine marching bands that the whole community could be proud of here. Okay. Washington High School, the directors are Kylie Coyne, Benjamin Harder, and this fall, we had Bob Carlson as the interim director while Kylie Coyne was out on maternity leave. They traveled to Omaha, Nebraska on September 15th, a nice early competition. Received fourth place overall and fourth place in class at that event, in a very large event down there. On the 22nd of September, they traveled to Waseka, Minnesota. They were sixth place overall, fifth in class, and received the Outstanding Drum Major Awards. We'll get a chance to meet them in just a little bit. On the 29th, they traveled to Starfest, which is in Sioux City. They were third place overall, second in class. They were the mayor's choice and received the Best Color Guard at that event. And on the 13th, traveled to Ankeny, Iowa, where they were fourth overall and third in class. A lot of the finest bands in Iowa at that event. Real proud of them at that event. It's a very large competition down there. Next up, we have the Roosevelt High School. That's, they're directed by Mike Hinch and Spencer Cruz. They traveled up to the Pursuit of Excellence in Marshall, Minnesota, where they received first place in the Navy class. They do their classes by color there. They were third place overall. They received Outstanding Brass in the Navy class, Outstanding Woodwinds in the Navy class, Outstanding Drums in the Navy class, and Outstanding Music Performance in the Navy class. Next up, they were down in Sioux City, Iowa, where they received first place overall at Starfest and Open Class Grand Champions, where they also were the Best Overall Visual, Color Guard, Front Ensemble, Drum Line, and also in Music Performance. They traveled up to the Youth and Music Competition, which is a very large competition up in the U.S. Bank Stadium. What a great opportunity for the kids to get to play up there in Viking Stadium. Up there in Class 3A, they were the champions at prelims in Class 3A. Surprisingly, Roosevelt is in Class 3 at that. It has to do with the numbers in the band, not the school size. They received Outstanding Percussion and eighth place overall in the evening finals. They also received Scholarship winner and also Outstanding Performer of the Day with Jake Newcomb. So there are quite a few awards there at that large competition. And then they also traveled to the Bands of America Regional at Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis on the 20th, this last weekend, where they received 12th place in Class 3A. At that event, that is in school size, and our largest school is actually in 3A. There is a 4A class size at that, and 40th place overall. Lastly, we have Lincoln High School. They traveled to Pursuit of Excellence in Marshall. They compete in the, the class size up in Marshall. They received second place overall in the Open Class. The Rosemount, Minnesota, who's really turned into our largest competition here recently, they received Outstanding General Effect and Outstanding Visual at that event. Next, they traveled to Brandon, where they swept all captions and won first place in Open Class. That's more of a regional competition right there. October 13th, they were up in Youth and Music in Minneapolis, and they were second place in prelims at Open Class out of 26 bands. Second place to Rosemount again, and they are also Outstanding Wins and third place in Finals. And then this last weekend, they are at the Bands of America Super Regional at Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis, where out of 71 bands, they were fifteenth place and fifth place in Class 3A. I should point out, they missed Finals by .7500 of a point out of 100 total points, and Rosemount ended up in 14th place, which is where the Finals start. Finals is really the pinnacle of that event that they have right there. So a very successful fall for our marching bands. If you've seen them, you know what I'm talking about. Just a source of pride for the community and for me personally. I've just watched them throughout the years. I did ask our student leaders to come in. I'm going to have them show you their salutes and introduce themselves and just say something special about the season. We have our Roosevelts and our Washington and our Lincoln Drum Majors. So go ahead and stand up, guys. Do your salutes, one at a time, or one school at a time, and then you can tell them something special from this fall. Introduce yourselves as well.
Well, I'm Andrew Bieber from Sioux Falls, Washington.
I'm Marissa, I'm a senior at Washington.
I'm Jake Newcomb. I'm a senior at Roosevelt.
Five, six, seven, eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
So, for me personally, the best times in our marching band was getting on the field every competition, because we have this break period where everyone gets together, hugs before we get out on the field. We have a tradition where we love a tuba, a lute, and it's always a lot of fun and there's some pride that happens because we know that everything is going to happen.
My favorite part this season this year was just the sense of community that we achieved at Roosevelt. I feel like it was one of the best years, the time, the years that we've experienced, everyone felt. Just between this level of community where I felt comfortable just talking to anybody in our band, I felt comfortable talking to anybody, despite, you know, the levels of leadership and the section leadership and the respect. Being sure everybody was included, and I felt that.
Personally, should be my favorite thing with marching, is going off the field, doing either live, reading, following, watching, or celebrating, watching.
I think about marching bands, probably first thing that I've seen is, I think, is often the real people again. I think the majority of your summer and, I think, the time the other, is masters. And then after that, it doesn't see the full, the real people.
I just want to thank you all for representing our school district in such an awesome way. Your competition obviously results, but just in how you carry yourselves and how hard you work. I live over by Lincoln, so I see the drum line running up Bridge Road in the summer, and I know band, your band director, Mr. Carlson, but all of your schools. I really thank you for representing. Thank you to your parents, who chaperone and are roadies for you guys and carrying all your equipment and all the time and the effort. So thank you very much.
And just one other side note. My kids were in marching band, and I would put marching band students up against any sport as far as your physical fitness by the end of the season particularly. I know how hard all of you work, and it shows in the success that your programs have had on the field and in the classroom. So thank you for your dedication. All right.
I was just wondering, Dr. Perkins, I noticed we had an interim director. Do you think that interim director, if he works really hard, could maybe get a full-time job with us?
I don't know. I think we could. We could push him along.
Somebody, somebody behind you is shaking his head.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No conflicts of interest tonight, so we will move on. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. That motion carries. Supplemental, supplemental consent agenda. We have four items for Sanford, 9A1234. May I have a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. That motion carries with two abstentions. Board member Ryder, board member Mickelson, and item B, approval of claims to Averra.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, and that motion carries with one abstention. Board member Parker. And we are on to reports of the superintendent.
Well done. Okay, our first report tonight is the K-12 Fall Enrollment Report, and here to do the Fall Enrollment Report is Mike Christopherson.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to provide you the student numbers for the Fall Enrollment Report. The numbers for the K-12 Fall Enrollment Report are based on the student FTE calculation for the fall funding date, which is the last Friday in September. These numbers were generated based on enrollments as of Friday, September 28th, and we continue to work with the state to finalize any overlaps, adjustments, and questions. We continue to see growth in enrollment numbers this year as a district. First, I'd like to take a look at kindergarten through 5th grade. We have slightly decreased, which was projected, in students by 63 for a total of 11,660 students, which is a .5% decrease from last year. In the middle schools, we are up 1.7% compared to this time last year with an additional 90 students, giving us a total of 5,474 students in 6th through 8th grade. Finally, the high school enrollment took an increase of 108 students for a total of 6,856 students and a 1.6% increase. Therefore, our fall K-12 enrollment number currently sits at 23,990 student FTEs, which is up .6% over last year. 23,990 is the FTE based on percent enrolled, while for anyone curious on how many actual students, like a head count, that is 24,245 students that we are thankful to educate and prepare for success in this changing world. The early, early child head start student count is up slightly with an increase of 23 students, providing us with a total of 1,131 students for a 2.1% increase over last year. The sumative total of early child head start in K-12 is 25,121. The following data revisits our accuracy for projecting enrollments that we looked at in the initial report this year. Again, great job to those that estimate our numbers and provide our task force and other district committees a very accurate number. Going a little farther back in history, we can see that we have 3,657 more students than we did just 10 years ago, and 5,487 students more than we had just 20 years ago. So just in those 20 years, we have gained more students than the total enrollment at any other South Dakota school besides Sioux Falls and Rapid City. Initial open enrollment numbers indicate a total of 1,007 students open enrolling into the district, while only 387 students that open enroll out of the district for a net gain of 620 students and a 2.6 to 1 ratio. So for every 2.6 we receive, one goes out. This ratio net gain is down from last year, where 1,062 students open enrolled into the district, while 341 open enrolled out for a net gain of 721 students and a 3.1 to 1 ratio. Again, this is very preliminary data that's playing from the state, and they make sure that I tell you that, because they're still working through all the numbers and addresses. So last year during the Fall Enrollment Report, I was asked about being able to see a map of the open enrollment out information as a board. They asked just to see what a visual might look like. And so we were able to geographically locate those on the map to give you a kind of idea of what that looks like. And so you can kind of see where maybe some heavier areas are at and where we might be losing some students on some of those border areas. But again, this is preliminary data, and we do that all based on their addresses. Lastly, I'll save the latest ethnicity enrollment information for the demographics report, which will follow this one. I would ask the board to acknowledge the Fall Student Enrollment Report and welcome any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mike?
So the, this, the map is students that open enroll out of the district?
Correct. Yep. There is a handful that they're still sorting the addresses. One of our neighboring school districts uses a different student information system, so that all takes time for the state to correlate that. But this is a pretty good representation of the majority of those that open enroll out.
And if you're open enrolled once, so you're counted every year. It's not like you only counted the year you actually file your open enrollment. I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Correct. Yep. Very good point.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you to the number crunchers for keeping it so close, for helping us all out for our budget. So we've noticed that before, and thank you again.
All right. Motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. That motion carries.
Our next report tonight is the District Demographic Report. Ordinarily, this comes to you from Deanne Conrad. But Deanne is out, and so she handed this off to Mr. Christopherson. Take it away.
Thank you. Yeah, she did do a great job of putting it all together for me before she left, though, so that was very nice. She said that Dr. Maher and I could actually arm wrestle for the opportunity to present this information tonight, but I gladly volunteered to deliver it, as it complements the enrollment numbers. I just delivered very well. But besides, this is a way better than giving Dr. Maher bragging rights and beating me on an arm wrestling. The demographics report contains essential data that so many of our groups utilize and is critical to our vision, mission, and strategic planning as we see changes that bring great opportunities to understand perspectives of children from different backgrounds. As Sioux Falls Public Schools becomes more diverse, we continue to strategically plan for the most effective ways of accomplishing our mission to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. As mentioned in the previous report, we continue to see that steady growth in student K-12 numbers. As we increase the numbers, we continue to see ethnic diversity change in all grade levels. District-wide, we have seen the following shifts in ethnic groups. The percentage of Asian students dropped slightly this year to 3.5%, excuse me, students dropped slightly from 3.4 to 3.4%, excuse me, 3.5% to 3.4%. The percentage of black students has increased from 11.9% to 12.1%. The percentage of Hispanic students are up from 11% to 11.4%. Native American percentage is down from 4.3 to 4, is up from 4.3 to 4.6%, and the student percentage of multiracial ethnicity is slightly up from 5.5% to 5.7%, while Pacific Islander students have remained the same at about .1%. Finally, the percentage of white ethnicity students has decreased percentage-wise with a 1% decrease from 63.7% to 62.7%. The Sioux Falls School District currently supports 2,510 English language learners. Reference now, you might see it as EL instead of ELL, like in the past, they've kind of switched that acronym a little bit. And there are currently 90 languages spoken throughout the district. Moving on to special, the special education population, which includes students from birth to 21, there are 3,876 special education students, or about 15.6% of the student enrollment, which is a .9% increase over last year. If Sioux Falls School District Special Ed population were a school district by itself, it would be the sixth largest in South Dakota behind ourselves, Rapid City, Harrisburg, Aberdeen, and Watertown. Switching over to our staff demographics, district-wide, there are 3,326 staff supporting our students and community. 1,815 are teaching staff, and a remarkable 1,190, or 66%, have their master's degree or beyond. Another 1,280 classified employees support our students by providing Another 1,280 classified employees support our students by providing a wide range of services, everything from serving nutritious meals to IT support to making our facilities safe and welcoming. The percentage of students qualifying for free or reduced-price meals sits at nearly 50 percent district-wide and is a constant reminder of the needs of our community. In the elementary, we've seen an increase of about .5 percent. In the middle school, we're up 1 percent in that number, and in the high school, we're up about .7 percent. The district celebrates the opportunity to serve a diverse student population. Diversity of student ability, cultures, and wealth provide for a richer learning environment for all. Staff members embrace each student as an individual learner. I would ask the board to acknowledge the District Demographic Report and welcome any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mike on the report. May I have a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Nice to see the diversity hold, you know, we always embrace the diversity in our community and, you know, reflecting our community as a whole. So, good numbers. Free and reduced lunch. We need to talk about that maybe someday, but thanks for the report.
I think the only thing, and it just occurred to me now, is maybe in the future, if we could see what the ethnic demographics of the staff are in comparison, because as we talk about trying to be reflective of our staff having their same makeup or closer makeup of our students, maybe just having a comparison. I know that's part of our strategic plan, too, and we get that in kind of different formats and different reports, but as we're talking about the demographics of the district, and I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head, so I'm not asking you for that information, but maybe in future presentations, when we compare, we can compare our staff and our students at the same time, just for comparison's sake. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. If you have those suggestions, we can take them back, just like the maps you had in previous year.
Yep. You're right.
Well, I think just looking at the number of languages spoken. Yeah. 90. When I went on the board a long time ago, it was a little less than 70 languages. And just in that 11 years, that's a huge change. And I know that it's a big job to deal with all of that, and I compliment our staff and our administration on, you know, keeping up and helping all of those students do the very best that they can. So, that's a huge task. It's a big challenge, but what a great opportunity for other students.
Right. Maybe one thing to add, too, as we look through the diversity, it's interesting to note that our middle schools have greater diversity than our high schools, and our elementary schools have greater diversity than our middle schools. So when we look at the diversity in our school district, it's not a bubble. It's the new reality, just as it is for our community. So it's something that we indeed need to embrace and make sure that the diversity makes us stronger.
Well, and it shows that, you know, I think I would be curious as to how many people move to Sioux Falls for the services, because we are providing these services and doing a great job of doing it. I look at the special ed, you know, they have the healthcare, and we provide the special ed for the families who move here to seek out those services. And we're doing a great job, the staff and our community, in serving them. So, thank you to all the people who do that, for the people who need those services.
And one of our strategic plans this year, items, is to make more of those communication tools available that automatically convert those languages and allow us to communicate with families, too.
All right. Very good. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries.
The final report of the superintendent tonight will come from Mr. Veek. Mr. Veek, as you know, is our Director of Finance, and will give us our first quarter finance report.
Unlike Mr. Christopherson, who tends to drone on, I'll make this a quick report.
I think that was a compliment.
Yeah, it was a compliment.
Sure, sure.
Hundred percent. So we're barely into this school year. I mean, we're fourth of the way through the fiscal year. That's why we're having the first quarter report, but we're barely into this school year. So in our unrestricted general fund, the non-federal part, we've spent about 14.8 percent of what we budgeted. Not very much to get a read on. We're slightly ahead of last year's pace, but last year's school started a little bit later, too. So we have some more payments upfront. On the special ed side, they even spend at a slower pace. They're at 10.6 percent so far, is all. They're slightly ahead of last year's pace as well, but again, we started school a couple weeks earlier, so we had staff in earlier, and the expenses are a bit higher. On the finances, on the revenue side for the general fund, Mr. Christopherson's report talked about the fall enrollment. Now, that dictates about 90 percent of our non-federal spending, so we're right on pace where we budgeted. So we're good there. So we've got 90 percent of it covered. We don't, the other big items outside the state aid formula or the opt-out is probably the next big, it's about 3 percent of the budget. We obviously know we're going to get the amount we budgeted there. So the final two big question marks, we find out usually right around January, maybe late January, is bank franchise and the school and public lands money. So I'll have a better report for you in January about that. But I would say, you know, early returns is we're about right where we thought we'd be, and on the biggest part of our, the most, what we can be sure about now, we're about right on the money on our state aid and state aid formula, which is half state aid, half property tax projection. So, that's all I have for you tonight on that. I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Todd? That was an exciting report. Thank you. No questions. All right. Good job. May I have a motion to acknowledge the first quarter financial report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. We have added a work session for November. On Friday, November 2nd, we will be having a work session at 3 o'clock, and purpose of that will be to discuss land purchased for our new high school. And to be able to stay as close to on track for the timeline, we needed to add that work session on the 2nd so that we can make a decision on the 7th. We typically don't take action on items at work sessions, but again, to push ourselves a little bit and to stay on track for the timeline that we need to stay on to be able to open the building by fall of 2021, we're adding that work session and moving things up just a little bit. So, I don't think, we don't really need any action taken on that, or just a piece of information, sake of transparency, as we go through the process with the new high school. So, if there is no other business to come before the board, may I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. Good job.
That's fast.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.